This April 25th, 2023. I'm pleased today that we have Pastor Dave Mayo here. He's going to be leading our invocation which will be followed by Officer Alvin Moore, who will be providing our pledge. For those of you willing and able, please stand for both our invocation and pledge.
Let us pray. Almighty God, you are the Creator of all good things and we thank you for the blessings of this community that you have allowed us to be a part of. We thank you that this community has such wonderful resources and such wonderful servants. And so we thank you this evening for those who lead, who govern, who point our way forward with hearts of service, those who seek to work for a just and civil community for all. And we seek always sound guidance and wisdom and discernment for those who lead with hearts of service. We pray that you will be glorified in all things as we seek to serve other people, those that you have put within our spheres of influence. We ask all of these things in your most holy name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under one law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor and thank you also Officer Moore. Our meeting is now called to order. I'd like to thank those that participated in an activity before today's meeting. We walked through a simulation of what it's like to be a county commissioner and even with all the citizens in the room, we couldn't get our approval rating above 50%, but we'll come back harder next time. There are a lot of requests out there to fulfill. We had some tough constituents in that simulation. But again, thank you for participating. That was fun. We have a number of presentations on today's agenda and the first one will be to present certificates to those that are part of the Wheeler High School Boys Basketball Team. And that will be brought by Commissioner Richardson. Okay, alrighty. Oh, I apologize. While we're waiting for them, are we waiting for them?
Is the team here?
Okay, while we get them, we are gonna, we are gonna go ahead Commissioner. We're gonna do the pets first. Just, it's better for them and it's better for us.
Those are wise words.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. So those that are here as part of National Therapy Animal Day, please join us at the front of the room.
Good evening everyone. Well, April 30th is National Pet Therapy Animal Day. But tonight we have four special dogs to honor tonight. So we have, we have Skylar, we have Rose, the DA's therapy dog, and my adopted therapy dog, yes. Uh oh. We have Mabel. Mabel is Live Safe Resources Therapy Dog. And we have Hope. Hope is a comfort dog for veterans and all kinds of folks. So we are very happy to see Hope. But I usually see her at Veterans Court. So Commissioner Gamble and I are honoring y'all tonight along with the board. And this is an annual thing we do. And Pet Partners, your Pet Partners is here. Can you want to tell us a little bit of how this started?
Oh goodness, well I haven't been with them for very long, so I can't give you the whole history here. But they are a national organization who works really hard just to get the word out about all the good and the benefits that all kinds of therapy animals can do. You see dogs here, but we had a horse last year and they can, they can just bring so much comfort and, you know, to everybody, all stages of life and all kinds of different settings. And they just, I mean, for those of you who've ever had a pet in your life, you know the kind of joy that they can bring. So I just, on behalf of Pet Partners, thank everybody who takes time out of their day, not only to go through the training with their own pets, but the time that they take out of their schedule to go and see the people that are brought so much comfort and joy through these, these animals.
So we're here to honor y'all tonight. And any other therapy animals that are out there watching, we appreciate what you do. Pet Partners Therapy Animal Teams make millions of visits per year in settings such as hospitals, nursing homes, schools, and hospice. And this is a great organization. And these, all these are local to Cobb, so we're very, very fortunate to have them. So we're trying to be brief tonight, but...
I just want to say thank you for all you do and with the animals, because they do play an integral part to our community and giving comfort in whether it's the courts or in the hospitals or in cases where children are very scared and then just helping us as we have challenges in our lives. So thank you all for being here. And I guess we will try to scoot together to do a photo?
Oh really? Oh, that's why, that's why she brought the cheer up.
One of those will work.
We're gonna return back to our original agenda and welcome in the Wheeler High School Boys Basketball Team.
All right, that's all right, make a, make an entrance. Oh, this is amazing. I love it. Our Wheeler basketball team, y'all. Well, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulates you for your exemplary performance this season, contributing to the win of the 7A State Championship and third Georgia High School Association title. These achievements were possible through your skill under the leadership of head coach Larry Thompson. So congratulations on such an achievement. I'm, I'm gonna go down the list and just have the players raise your hand if I say your name and then certainly if you want to give any words, welcome to do so. Calvino Stallworth, congrats. Coda Settle, Damian Mitchell, Julian Ormon, Isaiah Collier, Ricky McKenzie, Jelani Hamilton, Amari James, Nathan Earl, Cameron Brown, Josh Hill, Lemarian Lewis. Javion Nurse, Arrington Page, Malcolm Stephanie, and the head coach Larry Thompson. Assistant coach Richard McCray. Assistant coach Darnell Shepherd. And assistant coach Lloyd May. So with that, commentary? And then we can let one of the players.
Thank you. As principal of Wheeler High School, I am proud of these guys, not just because of their play on the field, but off the field or on the court. And they are students first and athletes second. And that is a testament to the fact that all six seniors have received scholarship offers. So we're proud of them. There's not a finer coaching staff in the state or in the country than right here. And I will turn it over to them.
I just wanted to make one correction. She said third GHA State Title. It's actually nine, most in the state of Georgia. Oh, and third and fourth, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
With all due respect, we just want to thank everyone for giving us the opportunity to be recognized tonight. These young men, they have put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into this season, extremely emotional. But I just want to say I thank each and every one of you, looking forward for everything you guys are gonna do in the future. And like always, go Cats.
I would just like to publicly thank these three men right here and especially him, because we didn't have a coach for two games and he stepped up. So, yeah.
Thank you so much. Congratulations again for Wheeler. All right, so we're gonna take our picture and then you all can take the certificates.
Short people in front, everybody. All right, you ready? Here we go. Three, two, gotcha.
Parents good? You have all the pictures? All right, thank you. 40th Anniversary. Anyone there with the temple, please join us down up front.
This is another, no, this is, this is another cause for celebration. So you guys are welcome to give them a round of applause too, since you didn't get them when they're walking up. So this is a proclamation. Whereas Temple Cole Emmett was organized in 1981 in Marietta, Georgia by founding members including Josh Littman, Larry Singer, Janie Berkman, Lee Chait, Charlene Vaneer, Jane Aaronoff, Cindy Singer, and Alan Goldberg. And whereas in 1990, the temple broke ground at 1415 Old Canton Road, Marietta, and formally moved into its new facility on December 7th, 1991, and has since served a congregation of more than 400 families, providing a full range of lifecycle events, educational programming, participated in national and regional reform movement leadership for adults and youth. It has provided... It has provided social and topical programming to enrich and engage our members and the community. And whereas since its founding, the congregation has been led by Rabbi Stephen Lebow, Rabbi Larry Sernovitz, Rabbi Aaron Box, Rabbi Aviva Bass, Rabbi Richard Baraf, Rabbi Andy Vogel, cantorial soloist Blake Singer, Canter Stephen Weiss, Canter Ellen Stetner, and Canter Mark Perman. And Temple Cole Emmett has led the way on issues that impact the Jewish community and the wider Cobb community, Cobb County community and beyond. The temple has addressed these issues by promoting allyship through our interfaith work, most notably the annual ecumenical Thanksgiving service held at Temple Cole Emmett for the last 18 years, fighting antisemitism and hatred in all its forms, serving those experiencing food insecurity and helping those experiencing housing insecurity. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize the congregation for its 40th anniversary and for its commitment to reform Judaism and contributing to our community on this, the 25th day of April. Congratulations.
Well, on behalf of the congregation of Temple Cole Emmett and our community here in Cobb County, we are very pleased to be here to be able to celebrate with you and the county at large, not just our congregation, but our presence here in the Cobb County area for the last 40 years. We have partnered with many, including Family Promise and Habitat for Humanity and others to help serve our community, and we are looking forward to 40 years plus and beyond. But I don't think I'll be president for that much longer. Anyway, thank you so much. We really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, our next presentation will be to recognize LGE Credit Union's donation, that their healthy donation to supporting our Cobb Veterans Memorial. Anyone here with LGE or the Veterans Memorial Foundation, please join us up front. Okay. Got to be here for that big check.
Big check.
I really don't need it, but... Good evening, everyone. Come on up.
Please come on up if you're here as part of the donation.
Keep coming, keep coming.
Get down.
How are you? Good evening, everyone. It is such an honor to be here tonight to recognize this generous, generous contribution to our Veterans Memorial Foundation from LGE Credit Union. They are the founding sponsor. So if you don't know about the Veterans Memorial, you need to go to cobveteransmemorial.com, watch the video, look at the website. It's going to be a gorgeous tribute to our veterans, all veterans, all branches. And since I'm the veteran commissioner in more ways than one, I've been here the longest and I'm the oldest, so I get rank with our veterans. But this is a great group. There are some board members here. I'm going to let Donna Rowe, the president of the foundation, introduce some folks and then also want to recognize LGE and thank them for this generous check.
Thank you. My name's Chris Leggett. I'm president and CEO of LGE Community Credit Union. On behalf of our members represented by our board and volunteers and on behalf of the staff, employees of LGE Community Credit Union, we're very proud to be able to make this contribution to the Cobb Veterans Memorial Foundation. We are very like-minded in a lot of ways. We're cooperative. We were actually just in this hall a few months ago getting our proclamation for our 70th anniversary in Cobb County. We were started in 1951. And so again, we're just honored to be able to do this and very fortunate to be the first founding partner and very thankful to be that. Thank you. Yeah, we do have a couple of folks from LGE here. Marali Christian is our CIO. Michael Sensavero is our chairman of our board today. Let's see where... There's a couple of... Christina Kendrick, who is our vice president of marketing, Natalie right here, Aura Bridges, one of our volunteers. And I think that's all we have from LGE here tonight. So thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We really appreciate it. And I'm going to have to step out here to tell you who all these wonderful people are. I've got, over here, I've got Colonel Skip Bell, who's on my board of directors. He is also the president of the Atlanta Vietnam Veterans Business Association, and some of his men are here with him and their wives. I've got not one of my directors, but my president of the George Vietnam Vets, Lester Dixon. Then I've got some Vietnam vets here, but on my advisory council is Dave Hamburg. He was one of my board members, but we raised him up to advisor. Then Bob Morgan, who is my CPA. He's also our treasurer and he keeps me straight. Next to him is General Curtis Williams, who is my board... He's my conscience and he sends me a lot of emails. And then, but he keeps me straight too. Well, it's hard to keep me straight. But, you know, it's hard to keep an Army nurse straight, but they keep me straight. And then, of course, my wonderful LGE family. And then these are my event committee people. And behind them is my Colonel Veritek, who is on my board. And then my attorney, who definitely keeps me straight, Mark Johnson, Margie Medlin, the chairman of our event committee, but also my board member. And then Linda and Sandy and Patricia, they're on event committee. And then Tony is my director of development. And I'm Donna Rowe, and that's it. Oh, where's Roy? Oh, Roy. Roy Lance is our special event person and he does most of our outreach. So that's who we... Yes. And he's a Marine, so that's it. That's the whole group. But I do want to take this opportunity to thank Commissioner Earl and the other commissioners for their dedicated support to the foundation and to this memorial. We are going to get this thing built. If it's the last thing I do, I told him if it is the last thing I do, just sprinkle the ashes over it. But we are going to get this done. And we're going to get it done for the men and the women that served this country, that helped keep us free so we all could be here today. Thank God for them. Thank you very much.
Okay, now we have to get a picture.
No, you can't cash the check unless you all get the picture. Donna.
Joining in, get over here. Short people in front.
Somebody short behind you, I can't see them. All right, there we go. We're sorting it out here. Okay, I think we got everybody. Here we go. In three, two, one, and gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you very much.
Okay. Now the Master Gardeners, represented by Donna Kennedy and I think Jennifer McCoy is here from Water. If y'all would come up. And Judy Jones. Hey, how are you? So I'm sure most of you know about our Master Gardener program. And they do a lot of work in the community. They just had their plant sale. But tonight, we're honoring them for over 10 years of work that they have partnered with the Water Systems Wildlife and Rain Garden Demonstration, over 10 years. So Jennifer McCoy at Water heads up that program. Judy Jones is our director of our water system. So we just want to... They want to give us a check tonight and show their support for the water program that they've been volunteering and partnering with for over 10 years. So in addition to providing expertise and labor as we develop and maintain the site as an official project of the organization, Cobb Master Gardeners have funded birdhouses and feeder supplies, garden plantings, education resources. In addition to the money donated this year, they sponsored the expansion of the bluebird housing on the property, creating a safer and more inviting habitat. We thank them for their support of our gardens and helping us educate Cobb residents on pollution prevention and conservation practices in landscape. Thank you.
Who wants to speak first?
Well, thank you. This will go a long way. Our demonstration site also serves as stormwater runoff and pollution prevention garden, which is something very important to the other wildlife and habitat. It's just located down on Atlanta Road in South Cobb Drive, if you want to come by.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. That goes to this, too. Thank you for all you do.
Commissioners, before we resume our presentations, I would like for us to add the last one, which will be for Marcy's Law. So with that, commissioners, I move that we approve the addition of recognizing Marcy's Law for Georgia's presentation of the Champion Award Coin in recognition of National Crime Victim Rights Week.
Second.
Is there any discussion? We'll call the question.
We need to submit her.
Okay, please.
And for the record, if you could please record my statement as in the agenda tonight.
All right, we'll call the question. Okay, you can just raise...
That's because I'm pressing the mic.
It's okay. It is... Oh, it's still a long life. Motion carries five zero. With that, I would like to welcome the ladies of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority to please join me up front.
All the pink and green ladies, go on down.
As you walk up, you may notice the lady to your right is wearing pink and green. That is because our county manager, Dr. McMorris, is also a member of the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. Thank you. All right, you guys look good. Good to see you again, President. All right. I'm pleased to present a proclamation on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. Whereas the Rosetta Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated was chartered April 30, 1988, it has grown to a thriving membership of more than 520 members, serving the Cobb County community for 35 years. And whereas the chapter has enriched the Cobb community through scholarships, helping teens to attend university, and serving as an official partner in education to three Cobb schools. And whereas families have been helped by the Rosetta Omega Chapters, ongoing efforts to address childhood hunger, packing and distributing power packs of weekend meals for students at schools and with local food pantries. And whereas initiatives the chapter brings to the community include programs to promote positive youth development and leadership and promote civic engagement, ensuring seniors are thriving, and working to improve and protect the environment and helping residents also build wealth. We now, therefore, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby congratulate the Rosetta Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated on celebrating its 35th anniversary. And we thank you for your continued service to the residents of Cobb County. This, the 25th day of April 2023. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I want to thank you so much, Chairman Lisa Cupid, for these congratulatory remarks. My name is Rhonda Robinson, Rhonda Yvette Robinson, that is. I am the current president of Rosetta Omega Chapter. I am the 12th president of this chapter. I would like to say that it took 45 strong-willed women to charter this chapter. I am humbled to serve as the current president. And with me today, if you oblige me, I want to share who we have with us. It is my honor and privilege to let you know that we have one of the current charter members with us. Our charter member is the one who helped organize this chapter. She is like a mother figure to me, and I want to identify her. And this is charter member Pat Simmons-Stuckey. I also want to take the time to let you know who we have with us today. And it is my honor to let you know that we have a plethora of women who are serving in our chapter. Some of them you may already know, but I just want to make sure that you know who is standing with me today. To my immediate left, we have the Honorable Kelly S. Hill, who serves as the Superior Court Judge of Cobb County. Again, I say to you, we have our charter member, Pat Simmons-Stuckey. I have my vice president with me, who is also a board member for the Cobb County Education, and that is my love, who I love dearly, that is Nichelle Davis. Next to her is the 35th Anniversary Chairman, and that is Krista McGowan. Standing next to... Oh, I'm sorry. Dr. Jackie is standing next to her. And next to her, you have probably seen her in these walls many, many times. And this is Sanja Brown. She is also a honorable judge in these halls as well. Very dear to our chapter, and you may have seen her as well. And she served for the first time in this county as the first African-American district attorney. That is Joyette Holmes. Served many times in our chapter and in the county. We have Maryne Brown. And next to her, we have a new member in our chapter, and that's Carleen Redmond. Moving and shaking when it comes to action in this county. And it is a very privilege of mine to introduce to you who is our Connection and Social Action Chairman, who makes sure that we do whatever we got to do to get boots on the ground. And that is going to be our Connection and Social Action Chairman, and that is Andrea Ford. And if you look directly in front of me who's taking pictures, that is our photographer, who's our official photographer, that's Karen Curtis Bates. I'm sorry. And as you know, like I said, serving in this role is an honor. But what we do is we try our best to make sure that we impact the community. And what I want you to know, we make sure that we do that through all our programs. And I want all of you to know that in this year, we have given over five, not just this year, but throughout the years we've served our community, we've given over $500,000 in scholarships. But this immediate year, we've given $55,000 in scholarships to the students in Cobb County. And I wanted you to know that. And as we continue to work in Cobb County, we're going to continue to serve, soar, and evolve. And you've already promised that no matter what we do, you're here to serve and help us, and I appreciate you for doing that.
Thank you for being here. And before we take the picture, I just want to take a note of privilege to recognize Carleen Redmond, who many of you may know through our CASA program, through our court system. So she is a familiar face here in Cobb County and oft in this room. And also recognize Andrea Ford, who many of us know through her leadership with Cobb County's Transit, officially Cobb Links. A strong Cobb County government connection with this group of ladies.
So thank you so much.
You're welcome. I also want to recognize Ms. Stuckey who's here. She has been with Cobb County for several years over our Cooperative Extension Program. So another Cobb County heavyweight. So want to make sure we recognize her. She was one of our first African-American Directors here in the county. Thank you. All right. Next up, I'd like to welcome those that are here with the Marcy's Program, with Marcy's Law, excuse me. And I understand that you will actually be doing the presenting for this part of the program, so please let me know who I should provide the mic to. I was told that I would not have to read this proclamation, but if I have to, I do not mind doing another presentation for this evening. I just ask the board for their forgiveness. It is okay. We are here to recognize efforts under Marcy's Law, but some of you may be familiar with if you've ever been involved with the court system. We have a proclamation that says whereas the term victim is more than just a label and has legal standing and protections that go along with it. Crime Victims Rights Acts, both in Georgia at the federal level, guarantee victims the right to meaningfully participate in the criminal justice process. And whereas equity and inclusion are fundamental prerequisites to survivor care and survivor-led services that provide victims with opportunities to share their experiences, which are essential blueprints for support. Support and service providers can increase access to victim services and compensation in areas that have been historically underserved, marginalized, and adversely affected by inequality. And whereas advocacy efforts such as Marcy's Law seek to give crime victims meaningful and enforceable constitutional rights equal to the rights of the accused. And whereas National Crimes Victims Rights Week allows us to recommit to providing accessible, appropriate, trauma-informed services to all victims of crime. This year's theme Survivor Voices Elevate, Engage, Effect Change calls upon communities to amplify the voices of survivors and to create environments where survivors have the confidence that they will be heard, believed, and supported. Now therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April 23rd through April 29th, 2023, as Crime Victims Rights Week, and recognize the importance of helping enforce victims' rights, expand access to services, and ensure equity and inclusion for all, this the 25th day of April 2023. Congratulations. Thank you. I'll allow you to make some remarks.
Thank you Chairwoman Cupid. I'm okay. So my name is Tamiko Pugh. I am the Victim Services Outreach Director for the Fulton County Solicitor General's Office. I'm also a board member for Marcy's Law for Georgia. And as we go into National Crime Victims Rights Week, I just want to say to Chairwoman Lisa Cupid, thank you for the work that you've done and the work that you are doing as it relates to helping victims and advocating on behalf of victims and survivors, especially with the Family Advocacy Center. You know, it's like a one-stop shop where a victim or a survivor can go to get everything done. And so if you've never had to go through the criminal justice system, it could be very difficult. It can be very intimidating. You have to go to court, then you got to go to another building to get a TPO, you got to go somewhere else to get your crime victims' rights compensation. And so it can be very intimidating. So to have a one-stop shop, I think that empowers victims. And so when we think about the theme Survivor Voices, to elevate those voices so that they can be heard, right? Effect change, and allowing them to really engage in that criminal justice process. I am going to quickly share a personal testimony on why this is important in the work that you all do. Sometimes people don't understand the importance of the Crime Victims Bill of Rights being added to the Constitution. And so some years ago, I was in a domestic violence relationship. And the day that I, can you hold this for me? The day that I told my abuser I was going to leave him, we were in the car driving up Interstate 85, and I said, I'm leaving you today. And he proceeded to, we were on the side of the road, and he beat me and strangled me until I was unconscious. And when the police came, they arrested him, and he was read his rights, his Miranda rights, the rights to remain silent, the rights to an attorney, those are constitutional rights. As a victim, I had no idea what my rights were. I was standing on the side of the road, afraid, confused, didn't know what to do next, where do I go from here? Crime victims' rights weren't constitutional, they were statutory. So there's a difference. And so this is important because they're constitutional now, so we can enforce those rights. And so the next victim doesn't have to stand on the side of the road or in the courthouse, confused, not knowing how to navigate that criminal justice system. This is why this is so important. This is why it's so important. So thank you for the work that you do, and I'm just honored to stand here next to you and anyone else who is working in the area of victim rights.
Thank you. This is for you. I think it takes a lot to share a story, and I think it takes a lot of courage to do that. And we thank you for sharing that and letting us know that the work that we do here is personal. I also need to recognize our DA. When he brought this matter, yes, please. When he brought the idea of the Advocacy Center to the board, this wasn't necessarily a quick process or one without question as we trying to decide how to move this forward. And when he stood up here to present his agenda item for funding, we also saw another display of courage. And we thank you for being open with us and letting us know that the work that we do on this dais is not just political, it's not perfunctory, it's personal. So thank you for giving us again another reminder of that. All credit goes to him and his team, because even when they had their program, he recognized the staff that helped to push this forward. So I shared yesterday at a groundbreaking, anything that, we can all do good things on our own, but anything that we do that's great is really a result of a number of people coming together to do the things that they are called, led, and convicted to do. And so that's what this award is for tonight, this recognition, this proclamation. And I'm grateful just to be a part of it, but there have been many other people that have made this happen. We just get to press the button and hopefully put some dollars behind it here. Thank you.
What we'd like to do, and I'll make this very short. My name is Mel Hewitt, I'm on the Board of Marcy's Law for Georgia. And I was shocked and very pleased to be asked to present a Champion Award to the District Attorney. And thank you for everything you've done on behalf of victims, your vow to prosecute violent offenders and hold them accountable, your work with the Family Center, your distinguished Army career. Thank you for all your service. And on behalf of Marcy's Law, we'd like to present you with this token and thank you for all your service.
So my name is Derek Marchman. I'm considered a consultant Green Beret or whatever you want to call it when it comes to community activism. And what Chairwoman Cupid didn't realize is, we are also presenting you a coin as a Champion's Award for Marcy's Law as well. It's also been my, is it duty? Duty to also tell a little bit about what we're here for. I do want to make a couple of comments before I get really rolling, and I will keep it to the Rotary Club speech level so I don't start preaching too much. First of all, I would like to recognize the AKA Sisters as the former International President of the Largest Attorney in the World, Kappa Sigma. It never happens without the local chapters like you. Kudos to you. Second of all, I don't know if I've ever been in a room where there's an entire female commission. This is incredible. I got to come north a little bit more. And Commissioner Burkle, Ian Caraway sends his best to you. So. I want to, first of all, congratulate the two of you for the work you're doing and your recognition and that we're honoring you for. I also want to thank all of the public officials that are sitting behind us, that are sitting in front of us, beside us, for all the work you do. I cannot ever tell you that I know you don't hear it enough how much we appreciate your service. There's never enough appreciation for the role, for the decisions that you have to make on behalf of citizens, because that is the root of democracy. As many of us are, we're business owners, and we can demand obedience of our employees. And that's not the case when you're a public servant, because you definitely have to manage civic conflicts, enduring battles with public dissent. So I want to thank you all for everything that you have done, because nobody ever thanks you enough for public service in this day and age. One year ago, one year ago tomorrow, I was standing on the Mall in Washington, and I am receiving the National Award for Victims' Rights for 2022 from the U.S. Attorney Merrick Garland, for the work that I've done over 30 years. It was an award that, of course, I treasure, one because it was created by my hero Ronald Reagan. And more important, it was pushed by my old boss, Governor Zell Miller, for me to get into this business. 30 years ago, we were on a roll. 30 years ago, I had mandated training for victims' rights. I had a growing victims' compensation. I had district attorneys hiring victim advocates. It was the big trend thing to do in the criminal justice system. After receiving the award, I got asked to reflect, you know, on my time of what we did 30 years ago when we were working just to get the Victims' Bill of Rights as a statute in 1995. And what that calls me to think about is, we've got so far still to go in this battle, 33 years later. And the thing that I can only encourage you to do is keep in mind a couple of things. There is a constant to every violent crime, and that constant is a victim. But the problem is, our system doesn't provide constant appreciation, care, and service to the victim. You know, that's the reason I cannot thank the good people of Marcy's Law for the work they did to take a statute that we got 30 years ago and turned it into a constitutional amendment with the approval rate of 80-plus percent in 2018. This is something that the citizens wanted. And so I can only ask you to keep in mind that constant. Now, let's be honest, we have to be realistic. We have not done that. We have not kept the victim as our constant. Most people believe that the district attorney represents the victim. That is not true, is it? You represent the state. Now, because he has to make some very difficult decisions at times to say, I have to do what's best for society if it is in direct conflict with the victim's wishes. And that is true. We have to do that. But the thing we also have to keep in mind is, we can do more. And the problem that we have to also address is, I'm an old officer. I'm from the hook-and-book stage. I'm from, we went in, we arrested him, we ended the call, and that was it. If the victim got some services 30 years ago, that was a plus. That was a plus. And what was the basis of that? Well, it's what I did my dissertation on. Officers experiencing cognitive dissonance when responding to first responding, I mean to family violence calls, which means we know what we're supposed to do by the rules, but we also know what I need to do now. And it creates tremendous conflict for the officers. It creates conflict for the DA's office. And what I only ask is, of all public servants, of all members of the community, is to do something that we have to do is go beyond, go a little bit deeper. It's not empathy, it's cognitive empathy, which means we will look at it, we will perform our duties, and we will not get emotionally charged by it, and we will not be swayed by public opinion. We will do simply what is right. Keep in mind of the situation I had when I was a young officer. Okay, hang on. Keep it, I will say this, keep in Keep it, I will say this, keep in mind of what I experienced as an officer. I had a case that was ending with a guilty verdict. I'm walking out of the courtroom, I am feeling great, and there's the victim. And she's like, "What are you smiling about?" I said, "We won." She goes, "I didn't win. They treated me like a piece of evidence." And all I could think of is, if only we treated her like a piece of evidence. We would put her in a protective environment, we would hound her with care, and we would secure her. Keep that in mind. Thank you so much.
There's a lot to be said, and we do have some members of our Public Safety Agency here. So, we hope that they got that message and can help share that.
I want to say thank you for the Marcy Law Foundation. I'd like my people who are here today to stand up because they are the people who actually do the work. And I want to make a correction to what you said, okay? The state are the people. And our goal in my district attorney's office is to be victim-centered, to make sure that when we focus on restorative justice, it's not just restoring the criminal or the offender, but also restoring the victims to bring them back to where they were before this happened. And one last thing, since I've got the mic, I'd like to call Kim McCoy up here because it was her vision 25 years ago that has started the Family Advocacy Center. And though I've been the one upfront fighting this fight for our office, this is the person whose vision, whose goal was to make this happen in Cobb County so we can deliver the services to our victims. And I want to thank the Board because when it came to, what are your priorities? Where are you going to stick your money? When they asked us to cut down on what positions we needed most important, we chose to fill our victim advocate positions to make sure we could do the job that we're supposed to do for our victims and make sure that their rights were upheld. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you all for being here. Do you want to get another, why don't we get another picture with Kim in it? And then, we'll move. Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Thank you for being here. Thank you for sharing. Thank you. That concludes the presentation portion of our meeting. And we now are at public comment. Belle, I'll turn things over to you.
Thank you, Chairwoman. The next portion, we will have a five-minute timer on all the speakers. The Board provides the podium for public comment. It's appropriate to review at this time the related meeting rules. When you come up to speak, if you would, please state your name. And if you're speaking on behalf of an organization, all comments should be addressed through the chair. A public comment is not a dialogue with the Board, but an opportunity for speakers to provide their comments to the Board. The comments should not be impertinent, derogatory, offensive, or slanderous. To that end, we ask that the Board encourages, regardless of the topic, for the audience to be respectful and courteous to the speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should give others the right to both listen and to be heard by treating each other with civility. Statements made during the public comments portion do not necessarily reflect the opinions of the Board or the administration of Cobb County Government. And like I said, there is a speaker at the podium for your, to keep track of your time. First speaker is Davida Carter.
Good evening. Good evening, Commissioner Cupid, Sheffield, Burrell, Gamble, and Richardson. Good evening, everybody. My name is Davida Carter, and I've been a resident here in Cobb County for about three years now throughout the pandemic and everything. And my concern here tonight is the water supply. The water supply at my apartments is, has bacteria in it. I gotten really sick. My doctor told me it's coming from the water supply and that it usually comes from a third-world country. So, I'm like, I never traveled out to a third-world country or anything like that. I had something called H. pylori, which is bacteria that's in the pipes. I called the EPA. They, I asked them to come out and test the water. They said they're not responsible for testing the water. I called Cobb County Water. They said because it's an apartment complex, they're not responsible for testing the water. I also sent my medical records and everything to my apartment complex, which I have not heard anything. And my concern is, being on a fixed income, I'm very sick. Like, I had to be on antibiotics for two weeks. Bad stomach pains, cramping. I've got low blood, had to get five iron transfusions. When they had to put the microscope down my throat to see, that's how they found out it was a bacteria infection. They took a biopsy, right, of my stomach. So, my concern is the water supply. It's very concerning because I don't want nobody else to get sick like I did. I was told that if it went untreated, that it can cause cancer. So, that is basically why I came tonight, to ask for help, to see who can we get to test the water at residents at Riverside Row Apartments. I know y'all can't answer, but that is very concerning to me and my family. My husband also has the same exact symptoms. All of the same exact symptoms. So, yeah, that's where I'm at here now, just wondering about this safe water. And I wanted to read something from the Environmental Protection Division, and this is for Georgia. Georgia Water Quality Standards. It say Clean Water Act Goals and Objectives. The objective of the Federal Clean Water Act is to restore and maintain the chemical, physical, and biological integrity of the nation's water and to achieve wherefore an attainable, the goal of providing, maintain the chemical, physical, and biological integrity of the nation's waters and to achieve wherever attainable the goal of providing for the protection and propagation of fish, shellfish, wildlife, and providing the recreation in and on the water. Water quality standards are a key tool used by states to meet these goals and are a fundamental component of watershed management, water quality standards, and are the foundation for numerous activities conducted by Georgia EPD, including development. Now, I'm gonna go down to this one part because it speaks specifically about bacteria that it's supposed to test for. Hold on, I'm sorry, I pulled it out. It says EPD, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Okay, here it is. Numeric and narrative criteria, that's under number two. Protect the designated usage. Georgia has general criteria that apply to all water of the state, which include both narrative and numeric criteria and specific criteria that supports a water designated use. Specific criteria are for dissolved oxygen, pH, temperature, and bacteria. In addition, the specific numeric criteria for lakes are for nutrients, chlorophyll, A, and pH. But I just wanted to read a little bit about that because this is very concerning. As an American Indian, the land and the water and the air is very important to us. To keep it clean, to protect our people and our land, that is very important. I'm a founding board member of Urban Indian Heritage Society.org. This is something I brought up to my board members.
Ms. Carter, I'm sorry, you're five minutes early.
Okay, thank you.
The next speaker is Sharon Burrell.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry I stepped out, I had a family call. If we can get the name of the apartment, if you can share that with your... Okay, thank you. All right, thank you.
Hello, Board of Commissioners. My name is Sharon Burrell, and I've been living in Cobb County for 12 years. I live over on 300 Riverside. I have seen evictions going on of tenants. And my concern is, if there's possible that instead of their items being placed on the street and being picked over by other residents or just being picked over and taken, and those tenants are not able to hold on to their things, is it possible to have some type of warehouse that can store these residents' or tenants' items and maybe give them like a month of free rent for the items of their, for their items, and then have them pay to keep their items in a warehouse until they're able to find somewhere else to go? It looks terrible. It's very sad to see their items being picked over and not being able to keep their things for themselves. And some of them are not even able to get storage at that particular time. But I've come from New York and I've seen this done. So, I just thought I would bring it to the Board to see if there's anything that can be done for residents when their items are put on the street. Thank you. It was my concern.
Kevin Redman.
Hi, Kevin Redman, East Cobb.
Informational Town Hall that you can participate in, we are going to be talking tonight about...
Hi, sweetheart. Congratulations. You've worked hard to get where you are. I am so proud of you. Know that we're all behind you, we all support you, and we all love you. Can't wait to see what happens next. Love you.
I'm here today to say goodbye to Aleah. Aleah, we just want to say thank you for the time that you've been here with us at the county. We have thoroughly appreciated you, and we just wish you so much success. And these guys want to tell you something, Ryan.
Good luck at Emory.
Good luck at University of Georgia.
I think Georgetown is going to be your choice.
Or is it Harvard?
Well, wherever it is, we wish you the best of luck.
Congrats, Aleah. Thanks for all your service to District 2 and the people of Cobb County. We know you're going to do great at law school. But remember, you've always got a home here at the People's Court.
You will be so missed. Thank you for all that you have done. And Harvard does not know what they're getting.
Just wanted to say congratulations. We're so proud of you. We know you're going to do so well at Harvard.
I was new to do it. Ever since we've met, you've been such a big role model to me. And I cannot wait for the great things that you're going to do with your life. I think I speak for everyone when I say that Cobb is going to miss you so much. Sending so much love and good luck with everything.
Congratulations on getting into Harvard. And I'd like to say I appreciate you for everything that you have done for Jerica, and I wish you nothing but the best. Congrats.
Congratulations. We are so excited for you. All the best at Harvard.
Aleah, thank you so much for your service. We appreciate you. You have been a joy to work with, and we will miss you so much. We wish you all the best.
And we truly hope you have a great time at Harvard.
I know you have a bright future in front of you. And when you're popping the con and yawn, we got Harvard's best of luck to you.
Congratulations on your acceptance at Harvard Law School. I know you're going to impress those folks in Cambridge, just like you have all of us here in Cobb County. Whatever you do, don't leave that highly educated mind in Boston, Massachusetts. Be sure to come back to Atlanta and hopefully back to Cobb County.
We're going to miss you. You've been spectacular help. Wish you could have stayed and trained with us more. But I know you're going to do an outstanding job.
It's Brunetta. I just wanted to take a moment to extend well wishes to you as you embark on your journey onto Harvard. Keep excelling to new heights.
Hey, Aleah. Mindy Seeger just wanted to say congratulations again on Harvard and good luck.
I gotta say, it's really sad for me to hear that you're leaving us. And if it takes me singing a song to change that, just like they did in the Super Mario Brothers movie with Bowser singing, I will. Although I think that might actually hasten your departure as opposed to slowing it down.
Wish you well in the next chapter of your life. You are Harvard Law School-bound. You're going to do amazing things simply because you are an amazing human being. And I'm so excited for you. I'm so excited for the path that you have chosen for your life. I know that you're going to be an awesome, awesome attorney. It has been a pleasure working with you for the past two years. And if you're ever in Cobb County, look me up.
Congratulations, Aleah. We're so excited and happy for you that you're going to Harvard Law School. What a great, great accomplishment, and I know you're proud.
Just getting back from a Braves game. Oh, they won. They are winners just like you are. Thank you for all you've done for Cobb County and serving in the role you have with such class and such honor. I know you're going to do well as you study law at Harvard. Just remember that you are one of us, and I know you're going to make us proud. Looking for you.
Hi, Aleah. Congratulations on making it into Harvard. You have amazing things to come in your future, and I can't wait to see what comes.
Hello, Aleah. I feel so lucky to have had the opportunity to work with you and get to know you these past several months. I truly do wish you the best and can't wait to see you change the world even more than you already have. Good luck.
Good luck at Harvard Law. We're going to miss you a lot. And thank you for everything. You have been very, very helpful.
You listen to others and help others and build bridges. And we need more people just like that working on our behalf. So, go Harvard because they get you. And I just, I just hope that you can bring these experiences that you've had over the last two and a half years into the next stage. Are incredible. You are amazing. You're an inspiration. And I'm so proud of you and so grateful to have had the opportunity to work with you.
That was awesome.
Monica Delancey.
It was only two seconds over five minutes. Just great accomplishment. We're so very proud of you. Commissioner Richardson, that was very thoughtful.
Yes, there is an uncut version because several people, I'm sorry. I had to shorten messages and shorten them.
But it was good. Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, Monica Delancey from Mapleton, the Riverside community. I first want to just pray for Lake Crossing Apartments. Last week, there was a fire that displaced roughly 59 residents. 20 units were destroyed. Already in a housing market that's already tight, that's...
Already in a housing market that's already tight, that makes even less units. Some of the resources that we were able to share with those residents was how to navigate those resources. They're shocked. The first thing they're thinking about is making sure everybody's safe in the house. Then the next day is grieving, realizing that the insurance policy they thought they had was really not insurance policy. It only protected just the apartment. And then realizing that even if you had insurance, it's not immediate that you'll be placed another unit. It's not immediate that all of your belongings is going to be provided to you. So, just going through that process. Three, four days later, as I'm still talking with some of the residents, I'm reminding them that American Red Cross offer more than just financial. I'm reminding them to take, to get counseling, to do that. Because I know I'm talking on the phone with them, but you know, it's kind of like you can hear their voice of the pain that their children is feeling, you know? I know when I was wrongly evicted two weeks before Christmas, with the Christmas tree sitting outside, it's four years later, but my son is still going to therapy with that. He's still affected by that. And to just share with the residents how to go about utilizing must-ministries for reprieve housing. How to talk to your school social worker about now that you're homeless, you can get some homeless resources, right? So, those things, having those resources, and also talking to those residents about, they were very appreciative. This is the third fire that has taken place in the Riverside community within a year. Last June, there was a fire at Premier Apartments. Roughly about 20 apartments were destroyed in. I still talk to some of those residents who have not been placed back in homes. On Christmas night, 300 Riverside had a fire. That units are still standing, so people can still see that the building is destroyed. The young lady today I talked with, she told me when they reached back out to her about being placed, because they now have found a unit for her, she said the two-bedroom now is $1,500. So she's asking me about some resources, and I explained to her how she should take advantage of reprieve housing. She is a pre-K teacher, and so she does have income, but however, going from $1,000 a month in rent up to $1,500, it is a shock for her. So definitely, she said that's what took her so long to reach back out to them, because she didn't know that she can take advantage of the reprieve housing. I told her that she should. So, again, when Atlanta Journal-Constitution did their report about dangerous dwellings in the metro Atlanta area, there were third-to apartment complexes listed for Cobb County. Eleven of those apartments are in the city of Mapleton. And one of the factors that is determined that the apartment is dangerous is fires. Because when there's a fire, it's not just one family, it's multiple families that's the story. And already, you have a community of Mapleton that have high eviction rates. Some of those evictions are non-renewal leases because you organize renters, right? So therefore, you have to go to court, and you have to explain this, that hey, how are renters going to know about resources if you don't organize renters? So if I have to, you know, be the person that has to go to court and defend myself, I could do that. If I have to defend myself on mean spirited videos, I can do that. But in a day, I am still standing. I'm standing here tonight as I asked some of my thrivers to come to me tonight, because they need to know that we exist. So we just don't exist when it's evictions. We just don't exist when 300 people a week are being evicted from their homes. We want to make sure that they know about renters' rights, resources, because we're a part of this community, and together, we will thrive. Thank you very much.
Debbie Fisher, did she leave?
Hello, my name is Melissa Martin, and I live in District Three. I want to start tonight by thanking this Board Majority and Chairwoman Cupid for your example of leadership. True leadership, where you work extremely hard to accomplish the county's business of serving all of Cobb County community members. I'm here to show my support and encourage others to speak up, and show Cobb that some of the consistent voices lately are not a true representation of the values of this county. While some residents have made clear their intention to persist in using incorrect definitions of many words and concepts like diversity, equity, and inclusion, I am here to give examples of the correct definitions and thank those commissioners working to ensure that Cobb is a welcoming place where everyone's needs are met. Diversity is not about division. How do those angry at Chris Ellis Lab justify rejection of what celebrating diversity truly means? Programs in Cobb like GEMS, which stands for Girls in Engineering, Math, and Science. GEMS was an annual workshop series created by Cobb Libraries for middle and high school girls. It offered a welcoming and encouraging environment in which to meet influential women in STEM careers, learn about STEM opportunities, and get hands-on experience with STEM technologies. It aimed to change knowledge, attitudes, and beliefs about women in STEM fields and support girls and their STEM curiosity. Moving on to equity, purposefully attending to the needs of the children and families whose interests we have historically, as a country, attended inequitably. Residents who frequent this microphone often indicate that they do not believe systemic racism or inequity exists. But facts don't care about your feelings. Studies on issues like racial disparities in maternal and infant mortality outcomes expose the toll of racism on black mothers, indicating that sometimes policymakers must focus on race to solve life-or-death problems. It matters to us that Cobb County black mothers are about two times more likely to die from postnatal issues than their white counterparts, even when insurance is equal. Meaning, you cannot blame the problem on poverty, it's about race. As a Cobb County resident, I want my local government working toward equitable outcomes. Hundreds of years of race-based discrimination will have consequences on people's lives today. It is not excluding to work hard toward outcomes, where black women and babies don't die at higher rates than white women. Getting to the root cause of inequity is not easy or popular, because it's a complex problem, but many Cobb County residents know the meaning of equity and support your actions to increase it. Onto big bad inclusion. Protest signs relabeled inclusion as inciting. The people criticizing DEI efforts are inexplicably opposing things like library accessibility services at all Cobb public libraries. Many of us are grateful for the Accessibility Services Room at Switzer, where librarians provide a warm, welcoming, and safe environment for people with special needs through the use of assistive technology like screen readers, magnifiers, and talking books. We are grateful our county holds events like the Easter Egg Hunt held earlier this month for visually impaired children. Only, only visually impaired children. A beeping egg hunt designed for children who are unable to spot eggs in a usual hunt and instead track them down by beeping sound. My children aren't visually impaired. Am I mad that they cannot attend this Easter Egg Hunt that was held? Of course not. There are lots of egg hunts that they could have attended. I am happy that Cobb is including visually impaired children by hosting an egg hunt specifically designed for them. Making services easy to access for those with disabilities is what inclusion truly is. And many of us are grateful to the three of you on the dais who support pushing for all DEI efforts in Cobb. There's a lot of work to be done, and it can be easy to lose hope, but I'm confident in this leadership's ability to continue to improve our county for everyone's benefit.
I'm Tyler Bigler from District Three, Cobb native, moved away, came back. Over the last few years, we went to work from home, and that applies to me, and thankfully, I'm actually still working from home, which is great. But as part of that, I wanted to replace my commute with something else. I kind of missed the brain break, other than fighting traffic, of listening to podcasts. So I started walking a lot around my neighborhood, and then I got kind of bored of that, so I started walking further into other neighborhoods, and then further and further. Eventually, I started making five-mile loops and zigzags and curves, and just trying to find different places to go and that I could just walk out my front door and go to. And it kind of illuminated a lot of things that I'd maybe never really considered before I started doing that on a regular basis, about how it is to be a person not in a car and getting around town, for whatever purpose, whether it's leisure, or commuting, or picking up groceries, or whatever. It was just fascinating. And when you start to look at that lens, it starts to feel a little hostile. Sidewalks aren't always great, crossings aren't always great. It doesn't feel like it was designed for you. It feels like the area was designed to be in a box, metal box, and get around, and that's kind of your only option. That varies in different parts of the county, I realize, but I think broadly, that is kind of the feeling. So, around that same time last year, or when I started doing walks, I discovered this book and this organization called Strong Towns. It's a nonprofit organization, but their whole deal and the point of the book is kind of talking about how we build our cities and towns today. And it goes back to post-World War II boom and explosion in construction, expansion, but particularly cars. We kind of radically changed the way we built everything around us, and over those intervening decades, everything has kind of become very car-dependent and car-heavy, even if it isn't necessarily obvious that it's that way. Whether it's highways breaking apart cities and splitting communities, we've got parking lots that just take up a clearly insane amount of space in our cities and towns, and it just seems like there'd be better uses for that. And so Strong Towns, the book and the organization, they talk a lot about those topics. And so, it's kind of changed my whole outlook on where I live and how I want to interact with that environment. And it's not about erasing everything that we have and starting from scratch. They advocate for incremental change. Make the smallest, the next smallest step, the next, what can you do now? What's easy? The smallest, easiest next thing that you can do, and then go do it. So they're very much in favor of making incremental changes that work for your community. And I caught the end of the working session earlier today, and I kind of heard some references to like missing middle housing, and that's another big topic that Strong Towns touches on, is we're missing that everywhere, really, in the US. We have some pockets here, even in Cobb County. I was surprised to find a lot of times in kind of older developed areas around area downtown, we've got old townhouse developments, we've got new townhouses developments. So I think there's some pockets and concepts that we can take to make that better in our county, make it broader, so we don't have oceans of just single-family detached housing, where you can walk miles and not even see a corner shop or a restaurant. And you kind of get, you're kind of stuck if you don't have a car and you live in one of those areas. And if you chose it, that's fine, but some people might want to get some of those accommodations, and it's just not balanced, I guess, is the point I'm trying to make here is. So anyway, I could talk for hours, and I have some friends in the audience, and they've probably heard me ramble about these things, but I would encourage you to check out the organization, check out the book, because I think you'll find kind of something in there for everyone. One of their other core messages is financial solvency. So, the way we build things to build a tax base that can actually support itself. We have a design pattern in the US where we build infrastructure, we build areas that we can't actually maintain over their lifetime. When they're newer, they're easier to maintain, but as they get older, they become more expensive to maintain, and the tax income that that development is creating may not be enough to cover itself. So, and that kind of can stack and get exponentially worse over time. And there's even been communities in the US where that exact thing's happened, and they've kind of imploded on themselves, because they grew and sprawled to an unsustainable level, and then the bill came due, and those communities got wiped out. And, you know, and some of them have taken steps to rebuild themselves, but I just wanted to call your attention to that movement, because it's kind of changed, like I said. It's like, my family doesn't know who I am anymore. They're like, who is this guy talking about? City design and...
Mr. Bigler, sorry, time's up. Chairwoman, that concludes the first portion of your public comment.
Thank you. We'll extend, we'll extend that. I said a two-minute break, we'll extend that. We won't start back. We won't start back. Oh, yeah, we'll... I'm not that...
All righty, everyone. We are going to get back to our Board of Commissioners meeting today. And we concluded public comment, and now we are moving into our consent agenda. Commissioners, just want to note that there was a matter that was pulled. That's going to be matter number 19 pertaining to the human resource policies. Before the meeting, the consent agenda items were scrolling on the screen, and will scroll on the screen after today's meeting. Commissioners, I move that we approve our consent agenda as it has been revised and to authorize execution of necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion?
I just want to make two comments that I didn't see until yesterday evening, but for items eight and nine, just the bid amounts associated with each of the ones. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, we'll call the question. Thank you. And I hate to do this this evening, but I have a family member who is not doing well medically right now, and I just got another text. So I'm going to turn things over to our vice chair to run the next part of our meeting. Thank you.
All right. Our call, item number 25, is also going to be pulled from the agenda. Do we need to vote to have that removed?
I think we're going to have to discuss it, if you don't mind just discussing that item.
Yeah, so for awareness in the audience, item number 25 pertains to a change order contract, so we are pulling that with regards to Accenture and the strategic plan that was presented to us and having additional consultant work to go back out to the community for feedback. Upon discussion, what we have determined we will do is conduct a public hearing in place of that. Dates will be determined and made publicly available through the normal process for public hearings, in addition to district commissioners taking on the mantle of presenting that information to their constituents alongside county staff. Any other comments from the board? All right, well, item 25 is pulled, and we will go into item 25. Drew, 26, sorry, Drew.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, County Manager. The department only has two items for your consideration this evening. Our first item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve issuance of a notice of quiet zone establishment letter to Norfolk Southern Railway Company and the Georgia Department of Transportation for the Nicket Jack Road crossing of Norfolk Southern Railway Company, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Called a question? Motion passes four zero. Chair abstains. Sorry.
Two chairs absent.
Motion is passed with four to zero, with Chairwoman Cupid absent.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners ratify previous action by the County Manager authorizing emergency drainage repairs on Chadwick Road in response to a sinkhole. Approve project number B 2286 to the 2021 countywide unit price contract with D&amp;H Construction Company Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $316,889 for said repairs. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Called a question? Motion passes four zero, with Chairwoman Cupid absent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. Next up, public safety.
Good evening, Commissioners, County Manager. This is our only item for tonight. We are asking the Board to authorize the transfer of cost savings from the 2011 SPOLOX funds, specifically from project EPS 31, which was for paving of the fire stations, to a new project or an existing project of EPS 30 for extrication equipment.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Called a question? Motion passes four zero, with Chairwoman Cupid absent.
Thank you.
Brings us, that concludes regular agenda to the public comment. Are there any other?
Yes, there are. The first speaker of the second portion is Mindy Seager.
Good evening, Mindy Seager. I just wanted to recognize that this, I have been informed that this is County Government Month, and we did a little simulation before the meeting started this evening, presented by naco.org, which is the National Association of County Governments, where we had kind of a simulation, and you had to answer the questions of the constituents, figure out budgeting items, what the percentage of approval would be, your approval rating, and kind of go through that simulation. And that is available, I've learned, on the naco.org website. And I think it was kind of a fun little game for us to play, those of us who came early, but definitely just appreciation for all that you all do. I think we have a tremendous county. We have a lot of talented people that both work and live in the county. And I know that the challenges that you all face are numerous, and sometimes we get to do fun things with animals and other projects that we get to get approved, and other times we deal with things that are more serious in nature. And we've heard a mix of that tonight. So I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you for all that you do. I know this job is not easy, but I appreciate the way that you continue to do that in excellence.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Donald Barth, over there in the city of Marietta. Not proud of that this week, I promise, but I wanted to talk about the good, the bad, and the ugly again. The good. We had a thing going on, Cobb County put it on, the master gardener sale out at the fairgrounds. What a cool thing for the community. I mean, what you did tonight, giving out awards and all, that's good. But you brought community, that place, it used to be at the water place. Now it's so big that you can barely get in there. You got to come in the back. Don't tell anybody. But what a good thing for all of Cobb County to have things like that going on. The bad. I guess we all know what the mayor did down there at Delk Road and Powers Ferry. Believe it or not, that should be county. How in the hell they got their hands on it? I don't know. What y'all are going to do about to reel it back in? I don't know. Maybe nothing. But in that same tract of land, just on the opposite corner, you've spent 60-something million dollars of bond money to build a new Kroger. We cannot let that area go into blight to appease one man's thing about apartments. And when we talk about apartments, I hope y'all are not against them. I saw a new one coming up down about there by the brave. Apartments are for everybody. They're supposed to be inclusive. This thing about we have to own our own home to live here, that's in Marietta. Don't let that be part of Cobb County. Last but not least, let's talk about the ugly. I'm still stuck in two and three. You know it's not right. The state says I'm in District Two. The state has the constitutional authority to put me there. I didn't bitch that I didn't get to vote this time around because they moved me. I can accept that. 2024 is fast coming. At that time, I'm going to have to either vote, or I'm going to ask y'all for some compensation. I can't go forever without a vote again. We voted last in 2018. The state changed the boundaries. I can accept that. The state did it. I won't agree with what they did, but now you have changed the boundaries again. So if the state says I got to vote in two, and you've changed me back to three, am I going to get to vote in 2024, or is all this going to be fixed? You know it wasn't done right, and I can just keep reminding you, until that's fixed, Cobb County's not perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Craig Harfoot. There's a lot of things I could talk about, but this is the one thing that keeps bugging me. We should be making the Braves pay for the police. If a church has a, on Sunday, they got to pay the police to do the direction of the traffic. Funerals, you got to pay them to escort the ambulance. And it's just too much of a big giveaway. When that thing comes up again, and if they're not paying, you know, we could use the police to, you know, that you're giving them their hours for free. They could be used to protect the people of Cobb County. And anyhow, I know some people get tickets, whatever, but it's, anyhow. The next thing I want to talk about is this whole boycott and Bud Light. You know, I'm just watching all this blogging and stuff, and I'm going, they're, these people don't even get it. Bud Light isn't even owned by America anymore. It's owned by Inbev, which is a Brazilian company. They also bought Miller Lite. So the people who think they're switching, it's still going to them, the money. They can look like they live in America, but it's owned by a foreign entity. So anyhow, they really, the bigger issue is now that they want the bricks and they want to de-dollarize America, this is a big deal for all of us, because the money isn't going to be worth as much if that happens. A lot of people saying, oh, it can't happen, but we did the wrong thing when we seized government's assets, and we were the safe thing. They used to say, oh, America's safe, Switzerland's safe. Well, with UBS and China owning 49% of the Swiss banks, that ain't safe. And anyhow, if you want to boycott, you should boycott all of Inbev's beverages. Drive the stock down. Let America buy it back cheap. Anyhow. So, next thing I wanted to talk about is, you keep talking about apartments. I lived in an apartment, had to, back when they were affordable. All utilities included in the '70s, $165 for a one-bedroom, $210 for a two-bedroom. You made $332 every two weeks. It was doable. Today, everything's not affordable. And it's back to the Federal Reserve again. Here we go. We want to, they print a bunch of money, they want us to raise the debt ceiling. But I just read today that now that they've collected the taxes, the taxes, the revenue is coming in for the federal government or less. They can't even, you know, it's not going to pay off the debt, what they've already printed. So it's a, it's a big deal. And the fact that all these other countries and China, you know, I mean, they're our friend, and we're getting all this stuff for cheap, but guess what? They ain't our friend. They copied our Coast Guard, they copied our CDC, they copied, well, Clinton gave them all the supercomputers and downloaded the Patent Office tool. They use all our technology, and it's basically, and they don't like us. So I would think that we got bigger issues. But apartments, I lived in one, there was a fire. Don't like living in apartments. Too much noise, too many things go wrong, and you get wet and get burned out, and it's not a great, it's not the way you want to really go. But if they keep talking about greenhouse gas, when we got all this super weather, we'll call it, because they're not looking at the sun, they don't understand how it works, but it's working, and the world's going to change fast. And if they keep talking about electric cars and windmills and taking down power stations, people are going to die of heat, they're going to die of cold, because guess what? Those things don't work at night, or wind windows blow. And there's not a lot of very smart people running the country now. It's all about the money. It's all about greed. And then we're going to have to figure out a way to live with one another without those things, because you just can't keep printing money. It just becomes worthless, and you can't feed or house.
Mr. Harfoot, I'm sorry, time's up. Mike Sibley. The person's left, and that's the last speaker.
All right, thank you. That concludes public comment. Brings us into the Commissioners' public address. Commissioner Gamble will take us away.
Thank you. And Ryan, this is for you, because tomorrow is our Professional Administrative Assistance Day. So again, thank you for all you do for District One. And nope, it's not cookies. I understand this is his new secret weapon in the office. So you can have Ryan explain that. Again, Ryan, thank you for all you do for District One and to all the other admins as well. You're welcome.
I'm going to be here tomorrow, so I'm not going to be.
And next, this is National Library Week, which is April 23rd through 29th, and we're asking you to meet up with us and our Cobb librarians at 6:30 PM on the first and third Tuesday of the month at different trails in the Acworth and Kennesaw area. Lit Squad is a new walking book discussion group organized for busy adults by North Cobb Regional Library for participants to walk trails together and discuss books. So come out and enjoy the sunny weather with us. On May 2nd, we will meet at Adams Park in Kennesaw. On May 16th, we will meet at Cobble Park in Acworth. In the event of inclement weather, an alternative indoor space will be used. You can RSVP and get meetup details by using the QR code provided. Next, the Mega Atlanta Career Fair returns to Town Center at Cobb on April 27th. Town Center host, mall host Mega Career Fair event to bring career opportunities to the community. This is your opportunity to meet with top quality employers seeking leadership and professional candidates. This event is this Thursday from 11:00 to 2:00 PM at Town Center at Cobb, 400 East Ernest Barrett Parkway in Kennesaw. You want to enter at the lower-level Belk Wing and Macy's Court. Again, congratulations to our Cobb 4-H winners at the Georgia 4-H State Horse Judging and Hapology Contest. Horse judging calls for contestants to compare their opinions of a horse against the ideal as specified by industry experts in conformation and performance classes. The hapology contest incorporates the concept of horse judging as a four-part competition that that includes a written test, skill station, judging class, and team problem-solving set. Decision-making, critical thinking, and public speaking are key elements of both horse judging and all. If you would like to get involved in our county 4H problems, you can contact Brittany Lee at seven seven zero five two eight four zero seven zero. Our Cobb County Economic Development is hosting Coffee and Conversations with Cobb on Monday, May fifteenth, from seven thirty AM to nine in District One at the avenues of West Cobb, located at three six two five Dallas Highway, Suite three eighty in Marietta, Georgia. All businesses are welcome to attend. The goal of Coffee and Conversations is to provide an opportunity for business owners, entrepreneurs, and startups to connect with county staff, network, and neighboring businesses, and learn how Cobb is available to support their business growth. To RSVP, you can contact Brittany Remison at seven seven zero five two eight one zero zero nine. And then we're gonna have a walk and talk with the Commissioner. And this is, our first event will be on Wednesday, May twenty-fourth, at nine thirty in the morning. We will take another walk in the park, and this time we will be at Kennesaw Mountain Battlefield Park. The starting point will be at nine oh two Cheetum Hill Road in Marietta, and we look forward to joining you there. And lastly, in regards to the Chressolus report, if anyone would like to discuss with me my lack of participation in that finding study, I'd be more than glad to discuss it with you. Thank you.
All right, from the office. We've got the Q1 Town Hall that occurred, was it this week? Wow, that was last week. It is Tuesday. So we had over two hundred, over one hundred people in attendance. Thank you to everyone who came out. It was a great time with wonderful community awards, and you can see the pictures here. Next, it's another promo for the It's Our Time of the Month event. Join our next Acts of Kindness event geared towards focusing on women's health. It's the Our Time of the Month event, the Our Time of Month, sorry. The It's Our Time of the Month event will have representatives from the nonprofit Scrub Life Cares and Wellstar Vinings. They will explain the importance of period care and personal hygiene. The event will be held on May sixth from ten AM to twelve PM at the Wellstar Vinings Health Park and is geared towards children ages nine to sixteen and their parents. Please register using the QR link above as the event has very limited space. Next, from the community, Taste of East Cobb. Come out for a delicious day at the Taste of East Cobb from eleven AM to five PM, Saturday, May sixth, at Johnson Ferry Baptist Church, rain or shine. Taste of East Cobb showcases the best local restaurant talent with chefs offering delicious tastings from their menus. There will be booths featuring the best of East Cobb, the best East Cobb restaurants, vendors, and sponsors. Attendees can expect to experience great live entertainment with performances by Walton High School's jazz bands, a silent auction, the best of Taste of East Cobb competition, and children can play in the Kids Zone area. Taste tickets will be available onsite and online and cost one dollar each. Items will cost one to five tickets per serving, and cash and credit cards are accepted. All proceeds go to the Walton High School Band Program. And free Spanish and Italian tutoring. Would you like some help with your Spanish or Italian homework? Would you like to learn a new language but don't know where to start? Would you like to practice having conversations in Spanish or Italian? Vinings Library now has free drop-in language tutoring on Tuesdays from three thirty to five thirty PM. No appointment is necessary. All ages and skill levels are welcome. You can email farley.jenkins@cobbcounty.org for more information. And then lastly, yes, bye, Aleah. So this definitely was her last, this is her last board meeting before, before she goes. And so I wanted to use this as an opportunity to embarrass her again. And yes, her, her mother is here with us as well. Hi, Donna. And that concludes my announcements. Commissioner Burl.
Well, first of all, congratulations to Cobb Police Mandate sixty-one class graduation. Deputy Chief Farrell swore in the new officers last Thursday, and they are currently patrolling with their field training officers. Family and friends gathered at the Training Center as they watched their loved ones walk across the stage to receive their graduation diplomas and have their badges pinned. The Cobb Police Awards Ceremony, also, I'd like to congratulate the many officers and civilians who were recognized for their achievements and heroic efforts at the annual Cobb County Police Awards Ceremony at the Police Training Center last Tuesday. Congratulations to Detective Michael Justice for receiving the Chief's Award. And we also had Cobb Fire graduation. On Friday, April fourteenth, Deputy Chief Kevin Gross swore in seventeen firefighters at our recently renovated Fire Training Academy. Recruit Class Sixty's journey at the academy began on August twenty-two. They completed twelve weeks of our physical, physically demanding fire school and twenty-four rigorous weeks of EMT training, ultimately earning their National Registry Advanced EMT certification. Several graduates had previous fire experience and several served in the military and two were in the Cobb Fire Explorers Program. The new probationary firefighters were assigned to their stations throughout the county. They will support our mission to serve the citizens and visitors of Cobb in a proficient, professional, and compassionate manner. Congratulations to all. This Saturday, April twenty-ninth, join the growing Public Safety Department and stop by their Career Fair to kickstart your career in public safety. They're hiring for multiple positions, including nine-one-one operators, GCIC technicians, police officers, and more, with up to eight thousand dollars in sign-on incentives. This is an open event, and recruiters will be present to assist and answer any questions. We can't wait to see you there. The Career Fair is a partnership with the Cobb County Chapter of the NAACP and the Cobb County SCLC. And did I say where it was, at the Training Academy? I don't think I said where it was. I did? I'm sorry, it's at the Civic Center at Cobb County Headquarters, not Civic Center. The Cobb County Police Headquarters, across from the Civic Center and the Aquatic Center, five forty-five South Fairground Street in Marietta. Thank you. April Adoption Special is still going on, and you can go to the Cobb County Animal Shelter and find your new best friend. Dogs and cats, dogs twenty-five pounds and over, and all cats are thirty dollars for the month of April. They're all vetted, they have their shots, they're microchipped, and they're spayed or neutered. To view the available pets and to make an appointment, go to cobbcounty.org/pets. The Animal Services is located at ten sixty Al Bishop Drive in Marietta. You've already heard about the Taste of East Cobb, Saturday, May sixth, at Johnson Ferry Baptist. It is a delicious event. You don't wanna miss it. And then the community input, we need your input on the Northeast Cobb Road Project. The county is working to better understand the issues and needs of people who use the corridor of Cobb Parkway at McCollum Parkway and Kennesaw due West Road and Old Forty-One Highway. And this is partly in District Three and District One. So all are welcome to attend. You can go to visitcobbcounty.org/transportation to access the study and provide comments on the interactive map. The first public meeting is from six to eight on May eleventh at the Kennesaw Community Center, twenty-seven fifty-three Watts Drive in Kennesaw. This will be an open-house format with a looping presentation. Drop by to learn more about the project and to ask questions of the project team staff. And we appreciate your participation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sheffield.
Let's see, where are we? Okay. Cobb County DOT held a groundbreaking ceremony yesterday for the much anticipated Chattahoochee Riverlands Project. The pilot project in Mableton will construct approximately two-point-four miles of a paved and unpaved trail between Mableton Parkway and Veterans Memorial Highway. The project will connect to a larger one-hundred-mile stretch of waterways, trails, and parks. The Riverland Project will improve our quality of life by having a positive impact on our physical and mental health and will infuse the South Cobb area with economic development opportunities and help to strengthen our existing businesses. A special thanks to the Trust for Public Land, Senator John Osso, for the federal investment of matching funds. Thanks to DOT, my fellow board members for your support, and others to bring this project, others for bringing this project to fruition. I would also like to acknowledge Mayor Michael Owens and the New Mableton City Council for participating in the event. Thank you to all of the attendees and sponsors that participated in our Career Fair and Pop-Up Legal Clinic this past Saturday. There were many across the county that were able to benefit from free legal advice offered by Cobb Legal Aid and a host of private practice attorneys. Thank you Judge Murphy and your team for partnering with our office to bring this vital service to the community. A big thank you to Wellstar, Cobb Works, Chattahoochee Tech, Sweetwater Mission, and the many Cobb County Departments for providing job information and resources to attendees. We look forward to seeing you in August for our third annual Career Fair and Tenant Forum. There will be a special prayer for the newly elected officials for the city of Mableton during the National Day of Prayer at the First Baptist Church of Mableton. The Mableton Ministers Association and the neighboring churches of Mableton are hosting the special service on May fourth at twelve PM. All are welcome to attend. The First Baptist Church is located at five-three-eight-five Church Street in Mableton. For more information, contact Pastor Barry Smith at seven seven zero nine four eight nine two one five. The Cobb Collaborative and the First Christian Church of Mableton are looking forward to hosting their South Cobb Resource Fair on May sixth. South Cobb Resource Fair, the South Cobb Resource Fair will provide a wonderful opportunity to connect with neighbors and chat with organizations and local community partners that offer resources to help empower families and communities to thrive. There will be activities for children, prizes, and much more for the entire family to enjoy. Please note that the event will be located at the Mableton Elementary School located at five-two-two-zero Church Street in Marietta. For more information, contact Barry Smith again at four zero four four two one three seven five one. We're doing it again. We're rolling up our sleeves on Saturday, June third, from eight AM to twelve PM for our annual cleanup to combat litter. The district-wide event will bring awareness to the challenges that the district and county face regarding litter, trash, and debris. Please mark your calendar to join me, Deidra, Keep Cobb Beautiful, Cobb DOT, the newly elected Mableton Mayor and Councilmembers, community stakeholders, and others as we put litter in its place. Oh, and finally, farewell to an icon, Harold George Belafonte, also affectionately known as Harry Belafonte. He passed away today, and he's known as a singer, a civil rights activist, and he impacted many lives. So just wanna wish a farewell, farewell to Mr. Belafonte. That's it?
Very thoughtful. Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you to everyone who attended today. Thank you to staff. That concludes today's meeting. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.